Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda, or second item on our agenda is the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Before we do that, let me remind everybody to make sure your microphones are turned on and you speak clearly into them. Our next planning board meeting is April 15th, 2014. Tim, Planning and Zoning Administrators Report.
Speaking of Planning and Zoning Administrator, we have offered the position to a woman. She has tentatively accepted. We're working now on going through the requisite reference and background checks. She should be in to sign her conditional offer of employment Thursday morning. So my goal right now is to have her onboard hopefully by the beginning of May. It has been a very quick turnaround. We had ten applicants for the position. I interviewed two, and both finalists, I think, could have been very capable in handling the position, but the person I chose, I think, is going to be a nice fit personality-wise with the department. Has a real enthusiasm for moving to local government planning, and I think will be a real asset for the town of Merrimack when she starts. So I hope to have a more formal announcement perhaps by the next meeting on the 15th, but that's the update on that for now. The other item I just wanted to update the board on is, we had discussed about a month or so back, doing some zoning amendments for self-storage facilities. That work is ongoing. The one thing that has stalled that slightly is in looking for the electronic version of Section Two of the zoning ordinance. There isn't one in a Word format. It's a PDF document, so I have to kind of recreate that into a new Word document, so it's taking me a little bit longer than anticipated, but I do hope to have that in front of the board within the next month or so.
If you send me that PDF, I might be able to help you with it because I've got a program...
I was gonna offer exactly the same thing. I've got a backwards and forwards program.
So do I.
Oh, you have to. Alright.
Alright, so we're all set with that. Congratulations on your choice of a new Planning and Zoning Administrator. We look forward to learning more about the person you've chosen, and it was a really quick turnaround because Nancy was with us at the beginning of March, and you were there in April.
Yeah, we actually posted the position prior to Nancy actually leaving us to try to get a head start on things. We had a very aggressive timeframe. We only posted the job for about two and a half weeks. The actual number of applications is slightly disappointing, but given the quality of the two finalists, I was pleased overall with the process.
Any other comments or questions by members of the board for the staff? Stanley?
If in the next few days you did hire somebody, could you send us an email so we don't have to wait till the 15th and wonder if you did hire anybody or not?
It's, the way the process works with our Human Resources Department, there's a conditional offer of employment which you will likely be signing this week. Until we actually go through, do the background checks and the reference checks, there is no official hire until that point, but as soon as we have an official hire, I'll certainly be making an announcement across all of the appropriate social media and email addresses.
Thank you very much, Tim. Any other comments or questions by members of the board for the staff?
I do have one other thing I'll just mention now. At the last meeting, the planning board did desire to have a site walk for the Edgburk conditional use permit. Just wanted to note for the board that as of today's date, we have yet to receive any feedback from either NIP or NanoComp as to an appropriate date that would work for their schedules, so we are still waiting on that at this time.
We weren't gonna hear them again until sometime in May, so we've got some time. Before we go further, I should have done this earlier, but let me appoint Nelson to sit in for Mike, so Nelson can vote with us tonight as the alternate. And if there's no other questions for the staff, that brings us to item number three on our agenda, which is GTAT Corporation as the applicant and owner. And this is a review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for site plan review to construct a 46,000-square-foot building expansion, parking lot improvements, and utility upgrades located at 243 and 247 Danny Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Oxford Conservation Districts, tax map 3D1, Lot 41, tax map 3D2, Lot 41-1. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just a very brief background and overview of why we're here tonight. As we're all well aware, GT Advanced Technologies is one of the leading business and manufacturers within the community. They are currently undergoing some significant company changes. As you probably have heard, they've got a major contract with Apple. They'll be building a very large facility out in the western part of the United States. And as part of their reexamination of the Merrimack facility, they're looking to shift from more of an R&amp;D focus to a manufacturing focus here at the facility. They are looking at other considerations in addition to Merrimack. This is on a very aggressive time schedule. GTAT authorized High Point Engineering, the consulting engineer for the applicant here tonight, to start work, and I think Mike completed about two months' worth of work in a couple of weeks to get this application in front of you. They have a very aggressive timeframe in terms of construction, so we look forward to the discussion here with the board and hopefully moving forward with this important project from an economic development standpoint for the community.
Thank you, Tim. I noticed from our, there's a letter from, on a butter that was left on our seats today. Is it, has that been given to the applicant?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. Please introduce yourself and sign in and tell us about your project. Yeah, it's a very bright light on the microphone in front of you. Try and see because it's a very bright light when it's on.
There we go. Okay, now it's bright. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mike Fabiano. I'm with High Point Engineering. We are the record civil engineers for the project. With me tonight, I have Giles Hamm, our traffic consultant, and also David Basie, who's the Advanced Systems Integration Manager at, got that right, at GT Advanced Technologies.
Mike, I didn't catch the name of the first person you introduced.
Giles Hamm.
Giles, thank you.
J.I.L.E.S.H.A.M.M., our traffic consultant. G, I'm sorry. G. My mistake, my mistake. So before I started, I handed out a few pamphlets. Those are more or less just 11-by-17 reduced plans of some of the renderings that I have with me tonight, just in case it's hard to see them across the room and figure it's useful to have some small plans in front of you. I thought what I'd do to start with is just kind of give you an overview of who we've spoken with and things that have happened to date, and then go through some of the major points and elements of the site plan to kind of give you an overview of the project and what the project is all about. Like Mr. Thompson has noted, we have met in the past with community planning and had a good informational informal meeting to kind of discuss the project we started. It was only a few weeks ago, which kind of started the engine to create the work that you see before you tonight. Those plans were submitted, and we have received peer review comments from your peer reviewer. We've also received comments from Public Works and the Department of Public Works Waste Wear Treatment Plant Operator. We did meet with the Conservation Commission last week, I believe on the 16th, and received a positive vote approval, conditional approval, from the Conservation Commission. And we have reviewed in detail all the review comments, in addition to community planning, community developments, recommendations for the project, and can say that probably bar none at this point, I think we can satisfy all the comments that we received, both from the peer reviewer, from the Department of Community Planning, as well as the Waste Wear Treatment Operator. All the comments that they've noted, I think we can address those satisfactorily through review process. We do have one waiver before you tonight, which came up because, based on the amount of work that was being conducted and the amount of time we had to get it done, there were existing conditions in place at the time, in addition to design work that had already been done previously, and we didn't have time to conduct a full boundary survey and new existing additions. And we were, and the client was satisfied that we could do our design work off the existing plans of record that we had, and that working with planning staff, we're confident that we will be able to submit a new boundary survey as well as an ASBIL survey prior to the fall. And because of the registry requirements and our ability not to submit an approved set of plans to the registry for that process and the waiver that we're requesting, that we're gonna follow up with that later. And I believe the recommendation that the planning staff recommended is totally satisfactory to us and how we can move through that process.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. The first order of business for the board tonight is to determine that the application's complete and accept it for review. And you've probably provided enough information for the board to take up that question, although the members by the board moved by Ms. Christensen to accept it. Desiree was the first with her hand, Desiree the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. Okay. If you have more that you'd like to present about and walk us through your plans a little bit, that would be the thing to do at this point.
Sure. Be happy to do so, and I'll stand up and...
Lynn has one question for you.
Who was just directly south of you?
Directly south, this direction?
That's south.
The PS&amp;H Power Company.
Sounded like it went on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're on now.
Alright, thank you. So this plan that you see before you, that's named Site Plan Presentation Exhibit, is more or less prepared just to show you the major elements of the project. Took the care to just label a few of the points, direct your attention to the one through six parts of the plan. Number one is more or less the actual addition, which creating, which is creating most of the work. The reason for the addition and for the site improvements is basically there's building construction, and there's interior work that's happening within the facility that's more or less going to displace the administrative services that currently resides within the structure. So when you take the people that are working within the existing structure, and you have to relocate them because of the infrastructure improvements that's happening within the facility, and then you add additional administrative staff that's coming from other locations, that creates a need for the 46,000 square foot addition. It's more or less a 23,000-square-foot floor plate, two floors. The addition is more or less 65 feet by 347 or 350 feet long. It almost takes up the full width of the building across the frontage. And by placing that new structure across the frontage of the building, that displaces existing parking spaces within the property, as well as the requirement of adding new spaces to the property to satisfy both zoning and also the requirement for new personnel coming to the site. It just so happens that the parking requirements work out pretty even between the zoning requirement, the new zoning that's in place versus when this project originally started back in the early 2000s, and how that dovetails with the actual parking that's really required by the user. They're more or less within 10 spaces or so, so the zoning meets the applicant's needs and desires for parking. So the addition is shown here in one, point number one. Point number two is some utility infrastructure improvements that's happening off the rear of the building. There is existing infrastructure out there today. The last time, with the last iteration or the final phase of the last project, created a need to put in some generators and some existing transformers and whatnot. Through this phase of construction, there's gonna be a need to put in up to six transformers and up to one to two cooling towers. So there's some basic utility infrastructure that's gonna be placed in between the building and the existing generators that are placed to the rear of the building. And as we stand here today, that is the only utility infrastructure improvement off the rear of the building. There's no other improvements planned for this area. Point number three, over here, it's in the north side of the building, which is abutting the fire lane and accessway that runs along between the building and the industrial butter to the north. There's a need to place two new inert gas tanks that's more or less in keeping with the existing tanks that are out there today. There is one tank, which I believe is nitrogen. I don't know if David, argon. It's an argon tank that exists out there today. The two tanks, one for helium and one for nitrogen, is planned basically in the same area. That's a screened-in structure. They're approximately eight to 10 feet in diameter, approximately 15 to 18 feet in height. It will be not screened, but fenced in with a fence of closure on a concrete base with a gravel area around that, and it's placed nice and neatly in between the paved surface for the fire access and way. Does not impact that at all and uptight to the building. Point number four is the parking lot that's being modified. The different colors that you see in the plan, what we tried to do, and hopefully it's clear enough for presentation purposes, but there's obviously an existing parking lot out there today that we are trying to improve to the point that we can with limitations on buffer zones and what we have to do with the wetlands area. But what we tried to do was keep the existing parking lot as best we could. We needed to modify some of the striping and the access points because the front door to the building is moving from the end or the corner of the building slightly to the first third of the building. So there's a need to modify some of the parking infrastructure in this area, and then create as much parking as we can down here because this is the primary parking lot, but also keeping in mind that we need to do some landscape improvement and to create, you know, a decent enough circulation in the area so it's to GT's benefit to have these parking spaces down here. There's areas that are shown in green that are new landscape islands. There's some areas shown in gray that are existing landscape islands or perimeter landscaping that is being turned into impervious. The parking, I believe, is being reduced in that area from 211 spaces to 179 spaces. There's not a great embellishment of landscaping because there is a need to create areas for snow storage interior to the parking lot, and we didn't want to get overloaded with ornate landscaping when there's obviously, you know, enough snow up here to go around these days where we have only so much area around the perimeter of the parking lot and the interior landscape islands to manage the snow. And that was important for the Conservation Commission to hear as well. The only main utility improvement is roof water being dealt with a new underground recharge system. Currently today, all the water runs off the roof. It goes through this koi pond over here to the side or directly to the detention basin in the rear, but there is no localized recharge that's going on until it gets to a wetland system, either in this area here or this area to the back or the actual detention facility. Because we needed to meet certain stormwater management guidelines and it's the benefit to the hydrology, the overall system, all the new roof water that is being discharged off the new proposed building or the addition is being directly discharged into an underground recharge system that's shown here. So there's a bunch of, you know, parking lot area that's gonna be disturbed because of that, but then that recharge system will recharge as much as possible for smaller storm events, and then from overflow standpoint, will discharge through a pipe, will go underneath the existing driveway, and then there's new spaces down here, and it'll discharge through a catch basin unit, and then it'll basically bubble up to the surface from overflow standpoint and down through a swell and into the wetland system where all the water exits in this direction. Point number five is the, you know, gist of the major site improvement. Because of the parking arrangements and the areas that we had to develop, this lot to the front of the site adjacent to Danny Webster Highway was the most applicable. Although this parking lot is not gonna be fully parked all the time, there are some swing shifts going on. There is a need to have sufficient parking to offset what's happening over here, and when the site is fully built out and all the people that are working at GTAT are coming to stay, there will be need to have this parking lot. The grading was significant in this area where there's about a 30-foot drop between Danny Webster Highway all the way down to the wetland system. What we tried to do was create a tiered system and kind of nestle the parking lot in as best we could, dealing with buffer zones and grade changes and hydrology and whatnot. Basically, there's, get my note here, there are approximately 128 spaces in that lot. The parking lot itself is approximately one and a half acres, and the total disturbance that you see in between the green and the gray is around 2.3 acres. Like I said, there is a significant grade drop between the highway and the wetlands, where there is a slight higher tier here in the parking lot and a lower tier here by a few feet. But the good thing that happened with this project from a hydrology standpoint, right now there is a discharge from the highway that enters the site here, and if you drive by today, you'll see a bunch of scour that just, you know, the discharge that comes out of this, through this catch basin unit here, across this pipe and onto the site, there's a bunch of scour that comes down and basically washes out, and it comes through the lot into the wetlands. With this system, what I like about this design is that we pick up the Danny Webster Highway drainage here, routed through a grass well to a point here, flow through a pipe into a forbay here where the rest of the parking lot is picked up, and there's best management practices, deep sumps and whatnot that will help protect this eventual retention system. But there's a forbay unit here. I'll get to this specific spot where I'm pointing to now, but flows underneath this retaining wall system here and into a recharge system where we're recharging up to the 50-year event, totally within its premises. So it's only until you get past the 50-year event that there's gonna be any overflow that will flow back through the wetlands, which is really a utility wetlands for the purposes of this industrial park, before everything flows out through a headwall structure and out onto the abutting PS&amp;H property. So there is a long time of concentration that the water has to travel to come through the system before it exits the site. It gives ample opportunity for, you know, multiple storm events to recharge into the ground. Point number six is the, what I consider a pedestrian way or pedestrian corridor. There's obviously a need to get people that, employees that work at GT from this parking lot back to the, back to the main building. It is a distance to travel and to walk and whatnot. I think in its basic sense, we need a way, we needed a way to give people a safe means of routing them from the parking lot back to the building. So what we decided to do, and I think works out well for the site based on the amount of foot traffic that's gonna be out there, there is a small buffer between the existing guardrail that, and this driveway is elevated up in the air where there's steep slopes left and right when they originally put in the fill to create that driveway. So there's guardrails on both sides. The driveway, I believe, is 24 to 20 feet wide existing. There is two feet of distance between the edge of pave and the guardrail. So what we plan on doing is taking that two feet between the guardrail and the pavement, and then stealing another two feet from the existing pavement to make a four-foot corridor, and then putting in at 50-foot regimens, the flexible posts that you can remove in certain conditions, but it will provide a way of protecting people that are walking from the parking lot back to the building and a way for operations on-site during inclement conditions and whatnot to remove those posts so they can plow appropriately through there. But in addition to that, GT has agreed that we provide a shuttle service during whatever conditions are needed to shuttle people back and forth between the parking lot and the building just as an amenity to the staff that are there, because, you know, if it's zero degrees, if it's snowing or whatnot, and especially if the removable posts have to be removed because they need to maintain the surfaces and whatnot, once those posts are removed, then it doesn't make sense to have people, you know, hoofing it back and forth between the parking lots, and they'll pick them up in a shuttle, basically a van service that'd be staying on-site to do that, which I think is, was a good idea. Because the alternative, in order to provide a different way of doing it, would be to basically build an eight-to-12-foot retaining wall uptight to either these wetlands or these wetlands, and then provide, you know, on the other side of the guardrail, a substantial impact to the buffer and a significant costly effort to do that. And because this is a secondary parking lot compared to a primary parking lot, we felt that it was appropriate to do so. I can say that there, and this will lead into this point over here that was raised in some of the comments, there is an existing cart road back before this whole project was ever developed that went right through Danny Webster Highway, through this piece, this kind of jog that you see in the wetlands here is from the old car path that comes through the site. There is an intention, potentially in the future, to go back through conservation and ask for relief to possibly bridge across this wetlands, provide a more amenable way to move people from the site over to the main parking field. You can kind of see the way it's set up, that this bridge element that's here is not meant for anything that's happening now with that future event, but there is a bridge element that we needed to use for hydrology purposes, but also for a means of access for maintenance, because the storm facility does need to get maintained over time. It's not easy to get equipment around, and we need to provide some type of way for equipment to get from the parking lot down into the facility to do maintenance. And because the way the hydrology and the water was working on that area, it kind of killed two birds with one stone. And then the third point would be that it could eventually be used for this path element that could go down through, and if we bridge, the shortest section would be in this area here, and we would bridge, but that's, you know, to be determined in the future if they want to proceed with that. But that's kind of, from a master planning standpoint, that's why that's shown the way that it is.
Thank you, Mike, for the presentation. Stan had a question partway through.
Yeah. Well, first of all, that was a very nice presentation, very informative. You answered two of my questions that had to do with, did you eliminate any parking with the building expansion, which you did?
Yes.
I was just wondering, do you, will you be having, it has parking questions. Will you have visitors at the building?
Yes, there are visitors, time to time.
So you have marked off parking spaces for them?
Yeah, there'll be, it's a combination of visitor spots that are marked off and then some overflow for visitor parking, but that's really the reason why this section was kind of cordoned off, because with the front door where it is, there's a need for certain principals and for visitors to come into an area that can be clearly identified and be close to the front door, in addition to having handicap spaces, excuse me, that are along the front of the building. But that's what this primary, this middle corridor is being used for, is for visitor spots.
You brought up my last question, the handicap parking.
Yes.
Is that for visitors or is that for employees, or both?
That's for handicapped individuals, regardless of their status on any other point.
Okay, good.
Someone has a sticker, they can park...
Some of the other, some of the other areas are far away from the main door.
They are. And if there's no intention to have, you know, if there's a reason to have, if this parking lot was totally full and the, all the handicap spots were full, then, you know, there's also a shuttle service. You know, you wouldn't want anyone, you know, in that, you know, anyone that has an ADA sticker to park in a facility like that and not be able to get back to the building. But there's, I believe there's one more space than the federal requirement for handicap parking, and I believe to date, the handicap spaces that are out there today have not been, you know, at capacity.
Thank you. You just answered my question, because it really, it was all for visitor that didn't answer your employee needs.
Right.
Thank you for that. I have two questions about the new pedestrian corridor.
Yes.
When you did your presentation, you were talking about the removable posts that sort of will designate that. How far apart did you say those posts would be?
50 feet, but they could be increased, and that was our, we thought, you know, between, because it's a linear flow of traffic and there's not a really a sideways movement of turning movements or whatnot, we thought that 50, we started with 100, but then 50 feet's gonna be more appropriate, but if the board feels otherwise, I believe that can be increased. I mean, I did bring a picture of what the removable post looks like, so I could pass it out.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. I mean...
Okay. I didn't think that it was gonna be necessary to really...
No, I'm not talking about that. He's talking about just these posts, whether 50 feet apart for these posts would be enough. Oh, no, not a real one, no. He's just talking about borrowing two feet from there and a couple feet of the pavement.
It's up in the ceiling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's talking about putting this little bit.
Is there curbing in addition to this, or this is...
No, it's accurate. There is no curbing.
He's doing the best he can with the space he has. How far apart are these posts?
No, I know it's, oh, I see.
These might be 20. If I had to guess, it'd probably fit one in the truck.
That's about a car.
But the highway condition, I believe, is different than this private section.
Yeah.
I mean, they could be, they could be increased, but I, I mean, 50 feet...
If you did every other one from these ones in these pictures, that'd be enough of them.
25 feet? I mean, it's not, I think it's, it could be, it could be increased to 25 feet.
Distance decreased number.
Increase the number or decrease the distance, one way or the other. I mean, it's, I mean, you think, it's pedestrian level or just regular, you know, vehicular travel compared to significant truck traffic, and, you know, it's employees with employees and that you have a linear flow of traffic. You know, it's, our opinion was we started 50, and we thought that was appropriate, and it's easy enough to drill more in, should that be, you know, take 50 down to 25, and it's a safety requirement for the owner and the applicant to protect their employees. So it's in their best interest to make it whatever is appropriate.
Yeah, that was my only thought. I just couldn't envision it along the road and know, and get a sense of what they would look like at 50 feet apart, whether that would be enough, and I don't know what the board's sense is, whether they'd want to see 25 feet or 40 feet or some other number. Does this company that makes them have a recommendation for how far you space them out, or they leave it up to you?
They're predominantly used for highway situations. I can't tell you that I'm an expert with the flexible guides. I don't know if Giles, if you have an opinion about typical spacing. I mean, I think these, this condition here is a highway condition and used for a different application, and we thought that, from the standpoint of, given it to Giles so we can take a look at...
Giles Hamm with Vanessa, so it's really is typically more for the highway condition where you see probably closer spacing here. I think as Mike said, 50 feet seems to be reasonable, but if you want it to be shorter, certainly, I don't think that would be a problem as well.
Okay. Well, let's see how the board's consideration of that goes in a little bit. The other question I had about the, um, pedestrian corridor is, um, one of the individuals I was speaking to about this suggested that, um, sometimes visitors to your site will stay at the hotel across the street and walk onto your site and if your paved pedestrian or your pedestrian way went that last little bit up to DW Highway, you might accommodate those folks trying to get across there.
I didn't realize, I haven't heard that yet. Do you real, you know that's the case, they stay, okay, well, I think that makes perfect sense to move it because you don't want people walking on the road, you want them off on a safe distance and we can add a sidewalk link from here up to the, uh, up to the highway.
Yeah, it's probably not more than a hundred feet or something. So, uh, those are my questions about that, um, piece of the component. Um, in terms of the, a butter who wrote the letter, where on your map is this located, this guy?
Uh, 3D dash one, forty-one dash two.
And so, that road to the north of the building you pointed at is the access way that he's saying sometimes has some parks, trucks parked on it and encroaching on it?
Correct, this is, this is Star Drive to the north. Uh, this driveway here and this section here, there's an access easement that allows GT to utilize, uh, this corridor to get back and forth from Star Drive. I did have a conversation, uh, with another official at, at GT today, uh, to talk specifically about that and my understanding based on that conversation is that for the last three to four weeks, there's been, um, because they are doing work currently within the facility, uh, under a different, uh, building permit, uh, to move some equipment around and there has been, you know, a very large uptick in the amount of truck traffic coming in and out of the site to move equipment, uh, out of the facility in order to prep the building for what's, for what's going on. And because of that, there's been issues with, uh, idling or staging on this road and my conversation with, uh, with GT was that we can't have people stopping and idling and stopping or, or dropping trailers, you know, within this access way because that goes against what the access ways is used for, um, that they can, they can stage on the fireway, they can come in, stage back here, line up on the side, but it's a temporary condition compared to a permanent condition because of what's going on, on the facility today.
Where did the trucks, where's the loading dock on the GT building?
There are two, there are two loading dock areas. Um, the primary loading dock today for what they're doing is this location here at the corner of the building. There's a secondary loading dock area that's located here in between the last addition that you see in white and this utility infrastructure here. Uh, what I've also been informed of is that as they morph the, um, the operation at GT from a research and development operation to a manufacturing, uh, facility, that the shipping receiving is gonna start changing where they'll be able to start utilizing this loading dock more than they were using in the past. So, there's gonna be two loading docks more as a primary shipping receiving and that once the, the move happens with all the equipment that's being moved around, um, that the burden that's happened in this, uh, corner loading dock area is gonna be lessened. The flow of traffic is a combination between trucks coming down Star Drive and using this access corridor to come into the site and turn around or trucks entering from the main road on off-hours, otherwise, uh, they come into the site, they back up. Um, the one thing I can say and, um, the GT official was very, uh, uh, very determined to get this point across is that the, the operation today and the amount of trucks that come in and out of the site from an equipment standpoint is much different than what's planned on happening in the future, uh, because the equipment operation is lessening and the manufacturing process is increasing, um, the, the bools that they're creating, there's, it's, there's a lot of them, but they're small, uh, and the, the, it's not an equipment moving around process anymore, it's gonna be make a product, ship it out. Uh, so, the, the amount of truck traffic that they're expecting is gonna be lessened compared to increased because of the type of operation that they're moving to and, you know, there's, there's a possibility that wouldn't be any more than one truck a day and it could go all the way down to one truck a week depending on the frequency at which they need to move trucks, uh, you know, move the product on and off the site. And that, that's talking about tractor trailers where, you know, a truck that might bring a pallet off compared to a UPS truck or FedEx truck or, you know, a truck of that.
Is that the rear elevation down there at the bottom?
Sorry?
The poster on the ground.
Oh, yes. So, I have two, I got, uh, I got the perspective view here and, actually, I'll move this down. Our architectural colleagues are nice enough to prepare some, uh, some renderings, uh, the plan below is a perspective view and the plan above is a, is a rendered elevation that more or less shows the, uh, the architecture that they're planning on doing. The elevation is approximately twenty-nine feet off a grade, slightly less than the, uh, the existing, uh, tour element that's, uh, shown in the, in the background here. This frontage is around three hundred and forty-seven feet, around three hundred and fifty feet, I believe, uh, sixty feet of depth. You can see the new primary entrance, uh, shown in this location compared to the existing entrances down here tucked in the corner, uh, over a canopy to overhang, uh, but now the primary entrance is being moved to the first third of the building, uh, and this is basically two stories of office administration use.
Okay. That area in the middle, when you glance at it, looks like loading docks.
Oh, this, yeah. No, well, there, there, there's a combination of, you know, there's, there's interest in just the architecture, trying to add some elements in, but there's also guidelines about, uh, how much relief you need to show along the frontage of the building so that you just don't have this long plain facade and I, I believe, I'm not an architect, I only play an architect occasionally, uh, but the, uh.
We know one.
Yeah. I only, I try a little bit, so the, I believe, you know, with the application that GT Advanced Technologies gets involved with, I think this type of architecture is in keeping with, you know, how this company is represented, you know, to the world, so it's important to keep the branding, uh, you know, with the company in place and that when they have visitors that are coming off-site that are coming, you know, from international parts around the world, that when they, you know, enter the site, that the architecture, you know, um, represents what GT is all about and I believe they've succeeded in doing that.
I have a question. The reveals, how, how deep are those, the elements you're using to break up that large mass?
I believe the, uh, these, these canopies are probably, uh, three to four feet and I'm only going by proportion what I can see right now where they have this overhang here, an overhang over the door and this overhang. These other reveals are probably, um, twenty-four inches, maybe thirty inches to eighteen inches, somewhere in that. I don't believe they're, they're very deep, uh, there's enough to create some shadow elements and enough relief back and forth to kinda give the building some depth. How's that for architectural spin?
Other comments or questions? Lynn?
I'm concerned about the drive-in and I'm looking at a, at a street view of that road. Particularly in the area of that blue dot six.
Yes.
There is no space on that guardrail to do your, I mean, if you put these posts out, you're gonna be out in the middle of the street to give people enough room to walk.
They're gonna be widening that by two feet on you, behind, Michael.
It's a four, four foot, four foot way, a four foot pedestrian way between the face of the guardrail and the face of the, um, flexible guidepost.
Are you going outside the guardrail?
Inside the guardrail, so there's a, there's a two-foot strip of dirt, more or less, that is in between the edge of pave and the face of the guardrail.
I can see that.
We're paving that and then we're taking an additional two feet away from the existing travel way, uh, to reduce the overall width of the travel way by two feet.
Is there enough room on that drive for two-way traffic if you cut into it by that much?
Yes, we believe so.
Just doesn't look like it.
Do you know how wide the pavement is there? This is a private driveway, right?
It is a private driveway.
I think you said twenty-four feet or, or twenty.
I don't believe it's less than, uh, than twenty-two feet. It was either, the existing is either twenty-four or twenty-five and we're moving two feet. Off the top of my head, I don't recall what the, um, technical documents, if I can go refer to them, I'd be happy to do so, but I believe it's, uh, no less than, than twenty-two feet. And, you know, there's, Giles can probably support me in this, but I believe two-way traffic, um, you know, from a ASH standard can be go down as, as far as twenty feet, you know, for two-way, private driveway, uh, traffic. So, we're, I believe we're above that. I don't know, Giles, can you speak to that?
Twenty, twenty-two feet would be fine for the, for the level of traffic they have here and the volume. That would be fine, uh, maybe to give you, uh, on a highway, a traffic lane is typically twelve feet wide, so we have eleven-foot lanes. On DW Highway out there, you probably have twelve-foot lanes, so I think it, I think it makes sense.
And that's what it would be after you give up your two feet is twenty-two feet left, eleven, two eleven-foot lanes?
Correct.
If you scale it, Mr. Chairman, if you actually scale it off the existing site plans, Plan C one hundred, it looks to be about twenty-four feet now or twenty-five feet now with, I need, you know, shouldn't really scale off these little drawings, but I mean, it's more, considerably more than twenty foot, I can tell you that now, it's nearer thirty than twenty.
There is, we did provide a detail, um, for the exact dimension, I just don't have it off the top, I can refer to the technical documents if you wish.
Presumably, the fire department will have to buy into it, I mean, if they're happy with it, we should probably be happy with it.
Now, all of the cars that come in and out are going on that driveway, they're not going through that access easement over the neighbors, correct?
Correct.
That's just trucks that goes on the access easement.
Correct.
Desiree, you had a question?
That answered my question.
Oh. Sorry, stealing your thunder. Nelson?
I've got a bunch, but just staying with the pedestrian access for a bit here, um, are you planning to, um, pave the section, as I understand, between the curb and the guardrail and then have a step-down, so this?
No, it's, it's all at grade. There's no, there's no curb out there today, um, there's, we're not planning on adding a four-inch or six-inch reveal for the pedestrian way because it needs to be maintained from a plowing standpoint. When you, you know, if there should be inordinate amount of snow, they need to maintain the way, uh, the best way to do that is plow like they're doing today, but we're removing the posts in order to, to do that during inclement conditions so that it's, it's flat, there's no reveal to the pedestrian way that they're above it like a normal sidewalk. So, it's not really a sidewalk, it's more of a, a corridor that's being protected between the guardrail and the, uh, and the posts.
Yeah. Okay, well, so it's all at that level, you're adding asphalt then in the two feet.
Correct, on the same plane.
Yeah, okay, and the runoff there is mostly just sheet runoff off the side?
Correct.
Drainage gets carried, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I'm very much in favor of, uh, the suggestion to move the, to have a pedestrian way come up to Route Three. I have personally seen visitors crossing Route Three in their business suits and with their briefcases.
Yeah.
Trying to get from the, the hotel to the, uh, to the GT, so.
I think it makes all the sense in the world to add more, uh, sidewalk off the pavement within the grass up to the highway. I agree.
Do you have a posted speed limit on your private driveway? I know that you don't, you're not required to have one and it probably wouldn't be enforceable, but it doesn't hurt to tell people to slow down, so, uh, if you're gonna have the people walking on the pedestrian corridor.
Be minimal to that, I think that makes sense to further highlight it.
Couple of sleeping policemen.
I don't know that, I don't know that I wanna tell them to stop.
I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's a well-known English expression, humps in the road, we call them sleeping policemen.
Uh, speed bumps.
Yes, yes. I think from, uh. In this, in this case, because of the drainage flow and the hydrology, the fact that it's all sheet flow, uh, and also from an operational standpoint, I think the, uh, the speed bumps because of the, the, the flow of, of water both, I don't recall, I think this is, uh, it's, it's crowned in the middle, so it's basically flow going to the left and flow going to the right. So, when you start putting, if you were to put speed bumps in, then all of a sudden the water hits the speed bump, concentrates left and right and then whips off the, uh, the edge underneath the guardrail and creates a pretty scaly, scarrow. My opinion is.
From a plow point of view, it's horrible.
I'm sorry?
And from a plow point of view, it's horrible.
Yes, yes, very difficult from an operation standpoint.
No sleeping policemen there.
The question, the question I had, your snow plow operator would hate a speed bump. They don't like it because they can't push the snow around. But I had one question on the same area, this little base where you put your posts in.
Yes.
Does that stay there permanently and will their plow hit that and rip it out?
My understanding is that those come out and that it's a, it's a total removal, so there's a, there's a, a pin in a hole that will, is fully removable. So, that once the post is gone, it's a flat surface and they can plow. If for some reason, from a specification standpoint, that, uh, that that particular device has that and we can't, then we're gonna change and at the end of the day, the, the post needs to be removed and it needs to be free and clear so that a plow can come by and maintain that road. And there, there were points raised at the Conservation Commission level that, um, you know, we obviously try to refrain from and, and, and remove as much of, uh, de-icing compounds as possible because around the wetlands, uh, but there is a need for pedestrian safety and for pedestrian corridors only, uh, to provide a way to maintain this area. So, it's a combination of snow plowing, whether it be by a, a, a smaller tractor or by a regular plow and by, you know, some de-icing purely for the, uh, pedestrian way, but not for the whole site.
The speed bumps would, would tear havoc on the drainage as well.
Yes, I agree.
Terrible.
And I, you know, I, my, my opinion and, you know, everyone has their own opinion, but, I mean, these are all employees of GT, working for GT, working together. This isn't a parking lot for a shopping center where no one cares about anyone, everyone's coming to work, they're, they're all working together and, you know, I think on day one if there's an issue, you know, it's in GT's best interest to raise concerns about speed, about access, about whatever, it's in their best interest to make everything as safe as possible because it's the same company that's, you know, parking in both facilities and, and moving around. It's a private institution compared to a retail or, or a more public situation and visitors aren't parking up here, visitors are parking, you know, in a denoted area closer to the building.
Now, you mentioned the provision of a shuttle service, um, and obviously that wouldn't be something that would be reflected on a plan, but, um, what times and dates and how do you envision that sort of existing in terms of when we would, when there would be a shuttle? Do they own a vehicle already, is that something they're planning to take on soon?
Uh, they do not own a, a shuttle currently, but the, the topic came up, I believe, in the initial meeting that we had, uh, with Mr. Thompson's, uh, staff in the first informal meeting, that, uh, we realized that if we weren't gonna proceed with a, a more, um, amenable route of going through the wetlands with a bridge because that was a huge undertaking from the timing that we're trying to work with, um, that we recognized that, uh, because we're putting people out on this paved surface and that it's not as protected as this area and it's more, more so it's a long distance. You know, we think this is perfectly applicable and, uh, and, and a good design based on for what we're doing, but, you know, if it's, uh, nine o'clock at night and it's snowing out and it's cold or it's seven o'clock in the morning or whatever, um, I think it makes sense to be able to get people from here to here and we thought that, uh, there'd be a queuing, uh, station or queuing station, but they're basically in the front of this parking lot, uh, to show to do a pickup and it's really depend on the shifts. Uh, right now, the shifts aren't totally determined, but, um, you know, a, a van, a, a typical van, eight to ten, I believe, probably individuals could fit in a, in a normal, you know, shuttle van type of thing with one of those extensions. We're not talking about a bus, we're talking about a regular van that they could also use for other, other purposes. And, uh, you know, as, as people are coming in, not everyone's coming in with, you know, thirty cars at a time, so if you could take fifteen individuals that are, that are parking and they're coming in at eight o'clock and take them over because it's snowing out or it's, uh, minus ten or what have you, uh, we thought that the, the van would do a, a pickup here and would just be available, you know, at the employee's discretion to use. And if they wanna walk because it's seventy degrees out and nice, then they can, they can walk, but it's, uh, it's easy benefit that they, you know, are willing to provide that service, I think it makes sense.
Come to work earlier and get a better spot.
Yeah, yeah, over here.
Any other comments or questions? Nelson?
Yeah, I have a couple. Um, first off, are the two lots both in the ownership of GT right now?
Yes, they are.
So, they're both owned by you, so there's no issues there. You mentioned the, uh, the water and sewer, you had approvals for those from the town? Expanded sewer requirements and water?
From a, from a sewer standpoint, there's still a need to go through, um, uh, the DEP, I believe eventually, to get an expansion on the, on the sewer that we worked through the wastewater and treatment operator to do so. We've received comments from the wastewater treatment plant operator and we believe we can, uh, we can, we can deal with those to their satisfaction, uh, and there, there's only three or four, I believe, that came out. One was just the size of the plants, which, uh, is an issue with, with how they store their plants on-site, they need twenty-four by thirty-six or something smaller than the than the thirty by forty-two sheets that we're providing on the architectural, uh, background. From a water standpoint, uh, my understanding with our conversations with the mechanical, actual plumbing, fire protection engineers, is that the, the water flow that, uh, that we had based on the last project was satisfactory, and that, um, there's not gonna be need for any type of embellishment, or, uh, additional water flow, uh, to the site to meet the fire demands.
There's no industrial water discharge, I guess that was where I was going, with the.
There is a, that's a, a yes and a no answer. The, uh, the no answer is that they do not have a, um, they do not have an industrial discharge, it's domestic flow that's coming in, uh, that's coming off the site, and it's discharging through a sewer line that, uh, that, uh, moves through the property this way, and eventually into a large manifold, uh, pipe that's out on the, on the railroad bed. Um, there is a, a, um, I guess the best way to explain it, under an emergency condition, uh, if, and, and bear with me, under an emergency condition, uh, because there's furnace technology within the property, if the, if the power goes down, and there's no power being fed to the site, uh, then if the backup generators get picked up and removed from the site, so there's no backup generators as a second line of, of defense, then there's a tertiary line of defense that brings water into the site, basically, you think about a fire hydrant, um, that's being piped directly into the building, where they have a, a, a cooling pipe system that wraps around the furnaces, that flows for a very long period of time, that basically picks up heat as it passes through the closed pipe system, and then discharges into the sewer. So, that discharge is a discharge of a point of concern from the sewer plan, because the last iteration we went through back in, uh, two thousand and, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, uh, we went through a significant, uh, sewer upgrade, both on the private side and on the public side. We actually improved the public sewer, uh, that routes all the way back to the railroad, and we work with the railroad company, we work with the uh, Public Works Company, we work with the butter, you know, through an easement and whatnot. Um, so that pipe was improved to a point where we believe, based on any new flows that are happening as part of this project, that that improvement project would be satisfactory to this project, and that, uh, if that condition should happen, and in my eyes, that's like a tornado coming and ripping everything apart, and, you know, everything's going sideways, um, that that water entering the site, being discharged in the sewer, that that sewer pipe can accept that flow, be routed into the property, but, I mean, routed into the sewer line that's out on the railroad. But that situation has nothing to do with domestic flows or permitting a flow, because it's a ridiculous amount of water. It's more to do with, can the infrastructure can support it, and, you know, can we augment or, or, uh, or add details to the emergency, uh, prevention plan, you know, that will note how that's gonna happen, which we plan on do so as our response to the Public Works comments.
Okay. Just to follow up on that, Nelson, in my conversations with the folks at GT, uh, power is a extraordinarily important commodity to the company. Uh, given their manufacturing process, they can't afford a nanosecond of power interruption, or their batches of what they're working on are essentially ruined, and they have to start from scratch. So not only is the power generation to the site important, there's a variety of different backup generators and UPS systems that would kick in before we end up in a situation where that water would have to go in and cool those furnaces.
Okay, thank you, I didn't understand your process before this, and I appreciate the information. Um, the, uh, in the parking lot, where you're building the parking lot, in the front lot, is there any fill required in there to construct that lot, or are you working just with onsite material?
Um, currently, we're working with onsite material, however, I think when we go through the, uh, the next phase of getting a true existing additions, my eyes are telling me that at some point in time, maybe some material was removed from that site, and what we're using as our existing, existing additions today is not necessarily gonna be the future. Um, so I do, if I had a guess and be a, a betting man, I would say that there is gonna be possibly for some fill on the high side in order to make that happen, but, you know, we're gonna be tweaking grades to do that, it's kind of a, the, the plan was not to do a, a, a cut the fill to try to have a net zero, we just had to make it work and make it fit. So there was a, a combination of, of working, uh, the higher grades off of Danny Webster, down to the parking lot, creating the swell system to do so, tiering the parking lot as best we could, we're not having really steep grades in between the transitions and whatnot, and then managing the stormwater system in a way that we thought can be, uh, managed and operated and work efficiently, given the fact that we had, uh, buffer zones that we needed to maintain away from the wetlands, and the butters to the, uh, to the north and the south, or maybe the driveway, that there's only so much we can do, and, you know, if it ends up being some fill condition, it might, you know, require some trucks be brought in sight to, to bring in some fill. But that won't be completely determined until a later date, when we have, uh, an actual, on-the-ground, true survey.
It sounds like you'd try and work it to minimize that, uh, we know, think.
Yes, yes, but it, it is, it's, it's limited on how much, um, because what happens from a design standpoint, uh, we're pinched by the driveway access off the main driveway, and how fast we can get down into the first lot, where it's mitigated by how low this parking lot can be off the highway, because we need to, can only have certain slopes, and we're trying to avoid, you know, large retaining walls and whatnot, and then this area in the back does have a retaining wall, and the more we drop that, the more that wall will increase in size, we're trying to manage the parkography as, as best we can. So that's, that's, so if there's some fill brought in sight, that might have to be the case.
DVD, okay, uh, one more thing, or two more things. Uh, the flow off your site onto the PSNH site.
Yes.
Before construction and after construction?
Yes.
Is there a reduction or change?
It is a, uh, it is a, well, depending on how you, uh, go through the standards, it's a net zero change. Uh, from a, there's a, our design point of analysis was a headwall structure here, um, that basically, everything flows in this direction, there's, there's water that runoff that comes from a budding property, there's runoff that comes from the highway. Uh, there's certain things that weren't dealt with in the existing condition state, that we're dealing with as a function of this, this project. Uh, and because we were adding some impervious over here, and the way the, the prior water sets were analyzed and dealt with, there's a lot of horse trading going on with the, uh, the way we're dealing with water from a design standpoint, but ultimately, our goal was to make sure that, um, that this headwall structure and any water outflowing through that up to the fifty-year event was not increasing, so I believe there's a, a net zero change. Um, the stormwater was challenging, I have to tell you, with the site, because of the way the numbers are working out, and trying to manage the smaller storms to the larger storms, but ultimately, uh, we needed to, we actually needed to do more than what was required for this area, uh, because of the overall hydrology picture, that's why the system got sized the way that it did, and it just ends up being that, you know, we're able to maintain a higher degree of recharge within the proposed system, than otherwise we would have to, just because of the way the hydrology make, makeup of the whole site was.
And what about the hundred-year storm, or you didn't look at that, or, or is it?
Uh, by, by code and by regulation, we did not have to manage up to the hundred-year event.
And you didn't look at it, or you?
Well, we, uh, from an analysis standpoint, we, uh, we stopped at the fifty-year event and ended that analysis. Uh, from a hundred-year event, there is, um, there is capacity, actually, the original, the original plan from this project when it first came through was only analyzed up to the twenty-five-year event, based on current standards, we went up to the fifty-year event. From a hundred-year event, we did not, uh, we did not analyze it in detail from the same level of detail we did before, but I can tell you that, um, it is a significant wetland, and there is a slight grade drop between the high side of the wetland and the low side of the wetland. Uh, however, any water or runoff that's coming off of proposed conditions does have time to, uh, to considerably recharge within the wetland system before it exits, um, through the site and into the PSNH property, which there's a continuation of the wetland system on this side, um, before it eventually flows down towards the, to the rear of the property. Uh, but it was not analyzed in, in detail for the hundred-year event, you know, based on code and regulation, we, we stopped at the fifty-year event.
Okay, and last question, uh, the traffic, you said a traffic analysis was done, there was some tra, look at traffic, increased traffic with the new system? Did I hear that right?
There was, uh, we, we do have a, and I'll have Giles speak to the, uh, to the traffic detail. Um, there was a report and a site analysis that was done, and a traffic report was submitted and reviewed by the peer reviewer, and I believe, um, there weren't any, uh, any concerns that came out of that, and we, in addition to the peer reviewer having the comments, we also have to go through, uh, New Hampshire DOT, um, to get a modified curb cut permit, uh, because of the change in, um, unnecessary use, I believe, of basically, you know, a number of trucks or cars airing the site and whatnot. Uh, but there was an analysis conducted by Van Assen Associates, and Giles' report was, uh.
Okay, who did the peer review, Jim?
ZLD.
ZLD?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm set.
Could I just ask one question, on your top car park, I, I referred to the new one as a top car park, are you gonna have any sort of lighting up there for, for security for people up there?
Oh, yes, yes, there, there are two light poles planned, uh, basically in this location, and photometrics, uh, reaching out, you know, beyond the parking lot, but not into a budding, uh, premises. And they're basically located, uh, not centered, but towards the ends of each of the, uh.
You, you answer, there's no spill over, that's really what I was getting over, thank you.
Does it meet our standards, or did you look at that?
Yes, it does.
It does, thank you.
Is there lighting along the pedestrian corridor?
Uh, there is existing lighting along the pedestrian corridor, where there's a, there's a light pole that's closely situated to where the number six is, and there's another one down here, I believe there's, there's one, two, and we can pull out the photometrics plan, but there's, I believe there's four light posts that are along the, uh, the entire way, so there's actually one up here for the future sidewalk that's gonna be extended up to the, uh, up to the highway, and then once you get past the driveway entrance, I believe there's one here, and there's one down by the, the wetland, so we're making use of existing light pole structures for the site, and not demoing those, uh, those poles. And matching, the, the two new poles that are coming in, uh, are matching the, the same photometrics and the same style that's existing out there today.
What is the distance from the middle of that second parking lot to the entrance, uh, or wherever your entrance for your employees are?
Ten, ten minutes.
Pardon me?
Ten minutes.
Oh, no, it won't take him that long.
Uh, depends on who's walking, I suppose, um.
I'm, I'm not interested in the, the time.
This, uh, from, from this location, the, the route over?
Yeah.
I used to know that number off the top of my head, uh, well, this is, this is three fifty, so three fifty, seven hundred.
Thousand.
Uh, it's about a thousand feet, a thousand to eleven hundred feet, I'd say approximately.
Other comments or questions? The applicants asked us to consider a waiver of the, Tom, I'm sorry.
Yes, thanks, I wanted to, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions, on the parking lot, um, you, you briefly mentioned the retaining wall, can you give us an idea of how, what size that is?
Uh, the, the only retaining wall on the premises is located here, at the northeast, northwest corner of the property at its highest, it's, uh, the, the parking lot is low, the area behind the wall is high. Um, at its highest, I believe it's eleven feet, and it goes down to, you know, a few feet, but it's only in that corner back there, um, where it reaches up to eleven feet, and there is a, an existing tree stand that's, uh, in between the, the wall and the, uh, and the white line, which is the, the property line here.
At one point, the, the neighbor up there in that corner had encroached on your property with a, a driveway around, what's the condition of that right now?
Uh, because we don't have, and you can kind of see the narrow right here, because we don't have the, the current survey, I, I can't speak to the particulars of that, because I don't know exactly where that encroachment may stand, we saw that on an aerial, we're just overlaying, you know, existing property lines to aerials, um, and it was brought to GT's attention. Um, and it's gonna be further discussed, uh, with them, once the survey is complete, um, and we know exactly where things stand up there.
Okay, is there, is there a need to buffer the parking lot to, to the residential area there, or?
There was, there was one comment that was raised, I believe, in one, if not three, locations between, uh, planning's comments and the, uh, and the peer reviewers' comments. Um, there are buffer zone requirements based on industrial use to, uh, residential use in industrial area. Um, I think it's a, uh, it's a buffer zone C category, and the question is, uh, above the wall and behind the wall, uh, a mix between the existing vegetation and new deciduous or evergreen, buffering, what's gonna happen above the wall, but we plan on addressing that with either a combination of, of Birmingham landscaping or fencing, depending on how the real particulars work out with a grading standpoint. Um, but there is, there is a need to add, because of the comments and our, uh, agreement in that, to add more buffering, um, physical buffering, whether it be by landscaping or, or fence in that area. It might end up that fence is more appropriate, um, given the condition and maybe the height at that one corner. It's not eleven feet very long, but I think, you know, trees are nice, but, you know, it's easy to walk around a tree and, and whatnot, yeah.
Over an eleven-foot.
Eleven-foot hole in the wall, yeah.
Okay, um, I also wanted to make sure or understand that fire and safety have reviewed this, as far as the expanded chemical tanks and whatnot?
They're in the process of reviewing, we have not yet received their formal comments, given, there, there's two different, uh, trains going on this particular project. Fire Department, I think, to this point, has been focused on the actual work that's occurring today within the building, so we have not yet received their comments on the, uh, the site plan at this stage, but I do expect those to should be coming in shortly.
Okay, and one of the conditions of approval is that these guys are gonna meet whatever those comments are, so.
I know our chief is very familiar with, with these kinds of tanks and whatnot in, uh, facilities, and, and so I'm, I'm hoping he does take the time to review it carefully and understand from your process of what you're doing in there, just how to maintain the safety with, with all that. Um, the other question I had was, if, if you could give us just a little bit more, I think I've heard a little bit as we've gone along, circulation-wise, as to exactly what your plan is. In the bits and pieces I've picked up, you, you're going two-way on the driveway in and out of the car park area, and trucks are mostly coming in and exiting from the back along Star Drive, or are they coming down the, the driveway off of DW Highway as well?
I, I think, um, so under the current condition, there's a mix between, and we don't have actual long-term counts about how the truck tra, from vehicular standpoint, this is the main entrance off of Danny Webster Highway, two-way traffic with the existing, uh, park facility, and the future condition for vehicular parking, that's not gonna change, where you have two main parking fields and the same use on the, uh, on the two-way traffic for the driveway. From a trucking standpoint, um, I believe it's a mix, depending on the time of day, and maybe, you know, what operators coming in, whether or not they choose to come down Star Drive and can enter the property this way, or if they're coming in for a quick delivery, maybe a UPS truck, or FedEx, where they come down this driveway here, uh, you know, enter in a, uh, a, uh, counterclockwise manner, and either come to the one loanee dock or the rear loanee dock, and then possibly exit the site here to come back to Star Drive. Um, under the, the future condition, my understanding is that because this is more of a pedestrian corridor, the focus will be on, even though the number of trucks is going down, based on the, uh, the, the comments I've received from GT, I think there's a focus to say, you know, let's utilize Star Drive, if you're not moving that much material anymore, uh, from a, an equipment standpoint, and you're just, uh, dropping off, um, uh, some items, but more or less, uh, just, uh, picking up material to be shipped out, and that number is, uh, is further reduced with the doing today, that there's no reason why they would not be utilizing Star Drive to do that, because I think there's a focus to make sure, keep trucks away from the pedestrian corridor to the extent possible. So I, I would expect that, uh, Star Drive would be, continue to be utilized, but that there is a, um, there is a, uh, a drop in trucking because of the change in use of the building.
And do you, do you have an idea of how often you'll be, um, maintaining your helium and nitrogen tanks?
I, uh, I don't know that answer, I don't know Dave, if you can answer that. My experience with GT in the, in the past has been, um, I mean, the usage goes up and down, and there's a difference between doing a, a vertical tank versus a horizontal tank based on the, uh, on the standard, but I, if that's once a month or once a quarter, I mean, it hasn't have been in that, that level before?
Dave, he's in with GT, um, we have a facility in Salem, um, Salem, Mass, that, that does similar production with them. Um, and we've, on our work there, we try to size the storage tank so that we could minimize, obviously, the, the delivery times, um, so we've been getting maybe three to four weeks in between deliveries. And we obviously try to do the same here, because it just minimizes the, maximizes the amount of material that we have on-site, plus um, the amount of calls back we have to, have to experience with getting material in.
Thank you. I guess my, my concern there is that obviously, when they're servicing those tanks, they're parked in that, that drive along the side of the building, and they have to come out, so they're either coming out or going in through the, the car park area, it would appear. Just to, just to be sure you can get those gas tanker trucks through there when it's filled with cars.
Yep, no, I, and I believe, um, I mean, typically, that the service is happening off-hours, but, you know, with once a month or once every three weeks, I don't know what's happening, um, those are not, you know, the sixty-two or sixty-seven-foot truckers coming through there, I think it's more typically like a WB forty or, or fifty-five, where it's a little bit easier to, uh, to maneuver that, that truck through the parking lot, and, and the parking lot, when the hours of operation for filling aren't suspected to be, uh, at capacity for the parking lot, so a combination of, of off-hours and not having the larger truck, when this truck is parked there, this, this aisle along the north side of the building. this, this aisle along the north side of the building is purely put in for fire access and fire way compared to normal circulation around the building. So there isn't a need to, there isn't any issue with a truck parked there temporarily to do the filling up. And then once they're done, they can exit through the parking lot, you know, either through this rear where they have a wider curb cut or come along the bond where there's a thirty-foot gap between the existing islands and the, or I think it's twenty-five foot gap between the island. And they can maneuver around that area to get out. So I, I suspect that any truck that's parked there to do any type of filling up, that there's not gonna be an issue about maneuvering that truck through the parking lot.
You've got two tanks there today, and they've been maneuvering past that side of the building as it stands, although the parking lot's a little different.
Parking lot's a little bit different, and there may be, you know, there may be more cars in the parking lot in its total build-out, future condition. However, you know, it's an operation standpoint from GT's perspective as well, that it just makes sense for the operators filling up the tanks and GT not to have them come in, you know, at eleven o'clock on a Tuesday afternoon, that they're gonna come in off-hours and make sure they can, you know, get in and out effectively and not upset operations during a day, you know, daily routine.
Okay, thank you. Desiree, I saw your hand up a while ago.
Yeah, this, this is more kind of question for us, I guess. The, the truck traffic, they're saying that it doesn't go up. Is that something that goes on the plans, what, what the requirement for the truck traffic is?
It's in the traffic study, which will be in the file for the project in our office.
All right, thanks.
Lynn, you had a comment or question?
I, yeah, again, on the truck traffic. I think it's unrealistic to think that they're gonna come in Star Drive. You've got a great big sign right on DW Highway, says, here's where we are, I think that's where they're gonna come in. I don't, I, I don't think it's gonna have an effect on it because I don't think you're gonna have that much truck traffic. But to say they're gonna use Star Drive, I don't think it's realistic.
I, I think, well, I, time will tell, however, I, I believe it's, it's in GT's best interest to inform the operators that are doing, because it's the same company. They hire a company to come in.
Yep.
They're gonna be speaking to the operators, and the focus will be, you know, from GT's perspective, to tell the operator, you shall use this entrance versus the other entrance. But it's not to say that they wouldn't use that entrance. It's actually been the opposite, my underst...
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim?
Stan, please.
This is an easy question, except I have a little trouble understanding. Why is there less traffic with manufacturing than there is with research and development?
The...
With trailers and trucks? I would think that if you're making stuff, you've got stuff going out in and out all the time.
The, the research, and I believe David can speak to this better than I can, but my understanding of the difference between the two is that under the, the, the current condition of research and development and being an equipment manufacturer, they're constantly having parts to equipment and fully mobilized equipment coming in and out all the time because it's an equipment manufacturer and they're, they're, it's research and development. Therefore, every time they have a cycle and they're trying to test new equipment and new parts, it's a constant flow of, of traffic. To the extent, I don't know exactly, but because of that operation and its equipment, that's much different than a pure manufacturing process where they're creating a bull, which is a, a small, the exact dimensions, I don't know, but it's a small element, up to fifty bulls. You know, a bull is probably, what, twenty-four to forty inches long, eighteen inches in diameter-ish? Thereabouts, fifty a month, correct? So fifty a month, a pallet, you know, it, it could be if, if the, the people that are receiving the shipments don't need the product, they could pack it all in one truck. You know, up to ten to fifteen, you know, per pallet, four pallets a truck, and ship it just once a month, that product that the entire building is being utilized for. So if all the equipment production is being limited, and alls you have is normal deliveries coming in from FedEx, UPS, and maybe some things, the fact that the equipment part is out of the process now, it's purely a manufacturing process, the, the, the shipping to receiving and the manufacturing is gonna be, for lack of a better term, a dramatic shift in the way items are coming in and off the site because it's not equipment anymore.
I will say, we thought we had you because on your, your very good pictures that you presented, we thought you had six loading docks.
Oh, right.
And for one trailer a week, why did you need six loading docks?
They're all existing too.
Well, that picture across the front, those things that actually look like loading docks.
Sorry.
Real quickly, you talk as if you're fabricating all these things out of thin air. There, there's gotta be raw materials coming in as well as product being shipped out, right?
There is, but I don't believe in the, in the amount of product that's coming in as an inordinate amount. David, can you speak to that?
Yeah, we, and typically, same thing as we talked about with the gas, those types of things. So our consumables will be delivered, truck will come in, and it might be half full with, you know, skids that have consumables on them so that we have plenty of material on hand. So that could, that could last us a month, month and a half, depending upon the amount of material that comes in on a particular truck. Our cycle times are, are quite long. So consequently, the material coming in and the material of discharging will be, should be a, a pretty good balance with us being able to, to package bulls, put them on a truck, and deliver those off-site as well as bringing consumables in. The, I guess the point is that with shipping to more, shifting to more production-oriented business, it becomes much more predictable in cycles where, where we, we know when the trucks are coming in, we schedule them coming in. We don't get a, a truck with one, one crate on it that brings in one piece of equipment or a truck that's taking a crate out of the, out of the facility. We get a truckload in, it backs up, it stays, unloads, and it's gone, and we're good for, you know, two or three weeks, whatever that, whatever that cycle is.
Thank you for that.
And just one other real quick question, waste products? You talked a little bit about sewer and things of that nature, is there a waste stream that gets created by this production process, or?
I believe there's a waste, a solid waste stream that's incarded off-site to a designated facility.
Yeah, there, there is a, a small waste stream on our consumable site that, that we, we've been able to, to find a recycler for. So we, we do that, like the same, same type of process in Salem. So we, we manage that on-site, we, we can, we can keep that on-site and then package that up to a recycler. So it's, they're gonna, it's not an everyday process, it'll be held on and taken off in a, once a week, once every two weeks, whatever that, whatever that turns out to be.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other comments or questions? The applicants asked for a waiver of requiring the fully developed plan drawings at this point, and we'll supply them later on in the process. And I think the applicant's done a fine job tonight of explaining to us all the details that we might have expected to see on a plan. I know that we've asked you a lot of questions, and you guys have done a great job of answering them. What is the board's intentions with respect to the waiver request?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant a waiver of the recording of the fi, of the final site plan at this stage. Obviously, they will do it when the thing is complete, as their letter dated March tenth, two thousand and fourteen indicates, on the basis that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, given the speed at which he wishes to work, and it's not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Desiree. Desiree seconds that motion, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Recognizing there's nobody else in the room, we do have to at least gavel open a public hearing and see if there's any butters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in. And seeing that there's nobody coming forward, we can close that public hearing. Tim, is there anything else that we need to address or discuss before the board considers its final decision?
Only for the board to consider whether or not the waiver for a sidewalk is applicable based on the...
Situation with the DOT.
Situation in particular with DOT.
Desiree.
Yeah, I, I would think that a waiver is not necessary in the case that there's no way we can enforce it at this time because of what's going on.
With the limitations that DOT has placed on us.
Yes.
I, I tend to agree that a waiver wouldn't be necessary under those conditions. Does that, you wanna see a vote for that, or is that enough in a sense? Okay. I know that Nelson may not agree with that, but I think so does his colleagues.
I just disagree with the logic of that, but...
We have no choice.
Well, I think we do, but...
Mr. Chairman.
Understood.
I would like to make a motion that we grant final approval of this application, based on everything we've heard today and the waiver we've agreed to, and, and wished them, the, all the power in their elbow to get this thing built, to help develop this project because I think it's well worth it, this, everything we need in this town, it's, it's a tremendous opportunity. So I'd like to propose we grant final approval of the application, subject to all the conditions outlined in the memo from Mr. Thompson dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, with the additional item which the applicant has agreed to, which is continuing his little sidewalk thing up into the DW Highway.
Thank you for the motion. Tim, before we hear a second, is there anything else that we've added tonight as conditions?
Yes.
Nelson.
One more, we, we, he has agreed, the applicant has agreed to have no parking of his trucks on the access road in the back, in, in the, you know, from Star Drive.
Add a note to the plan to that effect.
Yeah, have a note on the plan to that effect, yeah.
Is there a second for the motion so made?
I'm happy to second, I'm, I'm thrilled to see you guys in here doing this.
Yeah.
And staying in town and expanding, and I'm pleased that you're happy here in Maryland, so welcome.
So Lynn, is the second for the motion, is there any other discussion? It's okay, she can speak to it. I too wanna thank you for the presentation, thank you for answering all of our questions. I, I hope you don't take the length of time that we've asked you questions as being some sort of grilling or, or that we were really skeptical about the project. I think it's just a lot to know about the site and a lot to know about the business that you're in. And I thank you all, all three of you, for answering those questions satisfactorily for us, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Seven zero zero, thank you very much, and I know that you guys are sort of more working for the client than the client, but tell them thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
Thank you so much.
Item number four on the agenda. Depends on which ones you look at. Let's go with approval of minutes of the March eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen meeting.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes as written.
Desiree moved to approve them as submitted with no comments, seconded by Lynn. Any other discussion? Of course, Stan, what's up?
Page four, there's, there's really nothing wrong, it's just a little clarification.
Okay.
It wouldn't be acceptable, we wouldn't buy something.
Line two, Jim, James Patropolis will find out whether it has been. And I think to clarify it, it should take into consideration. Okay, I didn't say there was anything wrong, I just said it was a little clarification. Then you just say we don't have to change anything.
With Stan's clarification, does anybody else have any comments or questions on the minutes of March eighteenth? Seeing no other comments or questions, all in favor of approving them, say aye.
I have another, sorry, this is important.
You're done. Any opposed, any abstaining? I think you voted, I think you voted for it, seven zero zero to approve the minutes. We don't have an agenda item for discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. The only one that I have was one that Tim mentioned at the beginning with respect to the sidewalk of the folks down the south end of town, so we'll have to follow that one. Does anybody else have any other items they wanna mention briefly?
I thought Nelson did.
Nelson?
Yes, I, I wanted to see what we could do about proceeding with the creation of a sidewalk master plan. I know you have appointed three people from this board to serve on that. There were some other recommendations made by Tim Thompson in a memo to you back in December, which suggested a path to follow. And I would like to see the board take some action in moving in that direction, to establish this committee, get it started, get it working, get the consulting help we need and legal help we need to, to make, to make a master plan that's...
No question at all, thank you, thank you Nelson for bringing that up. What I have discussed before the meeting with Nelson and would propose to do if the board is so willing is, I will write a, a letter to the three members of our board that have been chosen. I think there's also some other town officials that we want to invite to participate in this, we'll figure out who those are. I will pick a date at one of our reserve Tuesdays and have that be the first meeting of the subcommittee. I'll attend it at, at meeting, the group can select its chairman and be off and running on its own. I think the intent is for that group to meet a time or two and, and determine whether they need some legal advice and what that might be, and, and move forward from there. How does that sound for the board? And Nelson, does that satisfy what you wanna see to get it going?
Legal and technical advice, we're looking for help from NRPC and folks like that too, but, yes.
Excellent, so it'll probably be into May before we get into that reserve meeting? When's our reserve meeting in May?
Our current calendar does not actually have any reserve dates left this year, so it's basically any of the off Tuesdays pending availability of meeting rooms. But generally speaking, the community development conference room for a meeting like this is probably the most appropriate venue.
Okay.
Which is typically available except for when the Heritage Commission meets, and I believe they typically meet on Mondays.
Okay, so there'll be a meeting room in one of the three places, the community development, the town councils, or this one? There'll be something available. Okay, so if that's okay with the board, that's the way that we'll proceed, I'll put something together and we'll get it mailed out. We gotta check with a couple of town officials and see who else we might bring with us. Does that sound all right?
Sounds all right.
Any other comments or questions on other items of concern? Hearing none, that brings us to item number four or five on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman and I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? By Lynn?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you everyone, don't forget to turn your microphones off.